Thank you, may be seated.
All right, next we are going to recognize our September Employee of the Month. Will Valerie Graves please come to the podium? For students that are in between homes or are without secure housing, Guilford County School provides van transportation. This restores dignity back to these students and allows for quicker rerouting in the event housing shifts. One of these compassionate van drivers is none other than Valerie Graves, an employee of the Transportation Department for six years. Transportation is very fortunate to have Valerie Graves on their Team of Excellence Road, Fay Crowder Phillips, Executive Director of Transportation. She is flexible, willing to go over and beyond, and a true team player. During the school year, she drives our students, served by the McKinney-Vento Act, in a van and cleans out our transportation building in between runs. During the summer, she continued cleaning the transportation garage and helped supervise our paint project in the garage. Valerie approaches every task with a positive attitude, a jovial spirit, and brings sunshine to every cloudy day. Valerie has been such a wonderful influence on our students that she transports. She has sponsored them on field trips, purchased them clothes when they needed clean clothes, purchased coats when they didn't have one, and provided for their Christmas, surprised them with Easter baskets, and even brought them summer clothes for the summer months. Valerie is our all-star on every level. Valerie's care, compassion, and dedication to providing our students with safe transport and emotional support earned her the nomination for Employee of the Month for September. Valerie received a $50 gift card courtesy of the Greensboro J.C. and during the month of September, your photo will be displayed at the district's central offices and in the Greensboro J.C.'s office. At this time, I'd like to ask Board Member Betty Jenkins, Vice Chair, to read the certificate honoring Valerie.
Thank you. Guilford County Board of Education Certificate of Recognition, present to Valerie Graves for Transportation for the Employee of the Month. Sponsored by Greensboro J.C., September 2025. And it's signed by Dr. Whitney Oakley, Superintendent, and Deana Hayes, Chair, Board of Education.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
It's an honor to stand before you all today to represent GCS. The slogan is "Better Together," and we are better together. This recognition may have my name and face on it, but it's a team effort. Without my team, I wouldn't be standing before you. So I'd like to say thank you to my team. I'd like to say most of all, thank you to my boss lady, Carla Boweare, who has given me the tools to drive and take care of the students in a timely and a safely manner. And most of all, I'd like to say a warm thank you to my Executive Director. Ms. Fay Crowder Phillips is a one of a million. She not only stands on what she believes, she stays with what she believes. She's the type of lady that comes in her office and not one day is her door closed. It's always an open environment. The only time you'll find that door closed is she's in a meeting. And I'd like to say, thank you, Ms. Fay, for being what you would say an outstanding Executive Director for GCS. Thank you, team.
Thank you, Ms. Graves. Well, we'd like to congratulate you and your team and anyone that's here with your family. So the team and you and anybody else that's here with you, we'd like for you to come up because we want to shake your hand.
Thank you so much.
Come on, team. All right, now we're going to recognize our Volunteer of the Month for September. Would Mrs. Tia Henderson please come to the podium at this time? All right. Mrs. Henderson, you're getting applause before I even tell about you. Mrs. Henderson is exceptionally good at building relationships with the students and staff at Scale Greensboro. Mrs. Henderson was responsible for assisting our middle and high school students with planting and harvesting a school and community garden. She was a participant and played a major role in our career panel as well as our Parents' Health and Wellness Event. And every Friday, she volunteers and creates a safe and welcoming environment for our students. Mrs. Henderson was also instrumental in our school receiving a grant to enhance the community garden for the current school year. "We are fortunate to have Mrs. Henderson here at Scale, and we are grateful for the impact that she has made on our school community," says Dwayne Waddell, social worker at Scale who nominated Tia Henderson. As the Guilford County Schools Volunteer of the Month, Mrs. Tia Henderson was presented with a $50 gift card courtesy of Toyota of Greensboro. And during the month of September, your photo will hang at the district's central offices, Toyota of Greensboro, and Scale Greensboro. At this time, I'd like to call on Board Member Pastor Alan Charaus to present you with a Certificate of Recognition on behalf of the board.
Mrs. Henderson, we thank you so much for your work. We want you to know how much it means. And let me say personally that I'm grateful that the first words I get to say in the new boardroom are to celebrate you and our volunteers. So here are these words, recognizing you, Guilford County Board of Education Certificate of Recognition. This certificate is proudly presented to Tia Henderson, September 2025 Volunteer of the Month, in recognition of your outstanding dedication, your generous contributions of your time and talent, your unwavering commitment to supporting the success of the students, staff, and the Scale Greensboro community. And it is signed by our Superintendent, Dr. Whitney Oakley, and our Chairperson, Mrs. Deana Hayes.
Good evening, everyone. I just want to say thank you so much and extremely blessed for the opportunity to be able to be so close in partnership with Scale. Dr. Waddell, it's truly an honor to be able to spread knowledge back into our community, and especially coming from a space of just adversity, you know? And so the kids, they need that impact. They need someone who they can relate to, who they can look up to, and it is such an honor to be able to bridge the gap between there for the kids. And I thank you all for allowing me to be here tonight.
We thank you too, and we would like to thank you, your family, your friends, any representatives here with you. We would like to also congratulate you. All right, always a wonderful way to start off our meetings. We are now at Public Comments. We would like to just remind our speakers that as you come to the podium, you have three minutes to make your comments. We would like you to introduce yourself and say what you'd like about your address. When the amber light comes on, you have 15 seconds left. And when the red light comes on, your time is up. And we would like for you to wrap up your comments so the next speaker can begin. If anyone in the audience supports what's being said, we would like for you to demonstrate that support by doing this so that the speaker can continue uninterrupted, and we would know that you support that person. We also ask that you refrain from using any student or staff member name as it is protected by state law. Our first speaker is Ashley Hairston, followed by Monica Walker. Welcome.
My name is Ashley Hairston, ZIP Code 27409. I am truly tired of having to come here and beg my children's school district to protect my child and to stop the harassment and bullying she is experiencing. I do not think this is an outlandish request. You have administrators and an athletic director that are facilitating the abuse my daughter is enduring, and everyone here is just as culpable. You are sending a clear message to the entire county that these egregious acts are perfectly okay with you. So other students and admin can inflict the same behavior on your own children, and you would be okay with that, right? In whatever elementary, middle, or high school your children or grandchildren are at, bullying is okay with no consequences, correct? I just want to make sure that we're all on the same page because I find it deeply hypocritical that Guilford County Schools is promoting the "Protect Our Students" campaign while allowing a school administrator to dismiss the testimonies of 11 cheerleaders. His reasoning is because he likes the student that is responsible for the bullying. How can students be expected to report misconduct when their principal openly disregards the complaint against the student he favors? The county encourages administrators to be customer service oriented, right? Yet no one from this board has reached out to help in these situations. Where's the customer service for my daughter? I have contacted the superintendent's office and every single person on this board. I've emailed every last one of you. Where's my customer service? This selective caring is why I would be pulling my younger children from Guilford County Schools. You have shown me that you do not value the well-being and safety of all students. Northern has repeatedly demonstrated that there are two sets of rules and a system I, along with members of your central office, agree with that is rooted in racism. There are rules and consequences for black students and parents, and then there's rules and consequences for white students and parents. There are rules for black coaches and rules for white coaches. Unless you are a white student that has black friends, then you get the same treatment as the black students to teach you a lesson. I've never had an issue with the principal until the coach and I witnessed him in his office late one night with a woman. After that, his behavior changed towards us. Feel free to run those cameras back to verify that. After that, his behavior towards us changed. And I can't help but wonder, if he liked my daughter a little bit more, would he have stopped the bullying that she is experiencing? Which one of you needs to like her so that we can stop this? My daughter has been emotionally, mentally, and verbally abused by staff at this school. Recently, she was physically injured due to the negligence of the coach. Just yesterday, I had to email the principal that I have right here with me to tell him to keep his hands off my child, and which he admits to doing that. So be wary of people who like to defend people like that because that says a lot about their behavior and their being okay with abuse. While some parents in this school may be afraid or too weak to speak up, I'm not one of them. I will always fight for my children, and I will teach them to stand up for themselves. I will not stand by and allow anyone to harass my child or walk all over her. So I ask, is "Protect Our Students" simply propaganda, or will you finally protect mine?
Thank you. Monica Walker, followed by William Hussey.
Good evening, Superintendent Oakley, Chair of the Board, Deana Hayes Green, and members of the Board. My name is Monica Walker, and I reside on Martin Street in the Gold Street Community, District 2. I'm a grandmother of students in GCS, in fact, 3, and I'm your former ED of the Office of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion. First, I want to thank you for your continued efforts which have produced the highly encouraging report on student progress. That progress is meaningful and worth celebrating. We are proud of our students and teachers for their hard work and resilience. This achievement is significant. It affirms that the district is moving in the right direction. You have taken a firm stand and remained committed to equity even in the face of pressure from a small but vocal group urging you to reverse course. I applaud your courage and consistency. Now, I ask you to hold that applause in mind as I pivot to a more sobering reality, one that deserves a cautionary, serves as a cautionary tale. Yes, our schools have made commendable progress, but even your own report shows that while Guilford County students are rebounding from pre-pandemic levels, we are returning to a familiar baseline. We've rescued them from learning loss, but we still face the critical challenge of accelerating them toward exemplary growth and closing persistent gaps. Just over a month ago, county health officials released a troubling report on maternal and infant health outcomes. The data showed alarming trends for black infants, outcomes revealing that black babies are three times more likely to die before their first birthday compared to white babies. It sounds like third-grade reading scores to me. I could quote stats on housing, homelessness, cancer, wages, and even jobs, and they would tell the same tale. The flaw in how we treat all these outcomes is our inability to connect them and get curious about the relationship between them. We operate within fragmented structures that prevent us from seeing patterns and fully understanding the depth of systemic issues. We have severe, persistent, and pervasive problems across all our systems that are inextricably connected. I am one of the first to defend and support public schools, public education, and public servants. There is no question that a problem exists. We just need to lean in and keep asking the right questions. I am cheering y'all on because I believe that this is one board in this city that can get there. So keep it moving. Thank you.
Thank you. William Hussey, followed by Erin Hild. Welcome.
Yes, good evening.
Good evening.
My name is William Hussey. I live in the 27406 ZIP Code. Good evening, Dr. Oakley, and members of the Board of Education. As a father of children attending Guilford County Schools, I want to begin by expressing my appreciation and congratulations not only to you as policymakers, but also to the administrators, principals, teachers, support staff, for your efforts in helping our students return to pre-pandemic achievement levels. You remain steady and sensible in the face of a global crisis, an event that claimed thousands of lives daily, was tragically politicized, politicized, and whose devastating impact was too often minimized by those who opposed vaccines and masks. Your leadership during that time matters. But as we look back, we must also look deeper. Even before the pandemic, our schools showed persistent achievement gaps, particularly between children of color and white children. While the system serves many, white children remain the primary beneficiaries of a public education system in which they are no longer the majority. I am confident that none of you finds this acceptable. And I know that some of you understand that overall achievement would rise if these gaps were closed. The loss is not limited to one group, it's a collective loss. We must face the hard truth despite good intentions. In decades of effort, the gap remains. That suggests something fundamental. Our current approach may be flawed. I urge you to come to this work with a beginner's mind, grounded in a deep understanding of our history and a profound commitment to equity. You may find that the root of the problem is not what we've long assumed it to be. As a black man educated in public schools and still a proud supporter of public education, I want to be clear. This is a difference in the experiences, challenges, and outcomes of students of color navigating a system that was not originally designed for them. Until we address the systematic, systemic deficits built into that system, we will continue to see deficits in our outcomes. Thank you for your time and for your commitment to making this system work for all our children. Thank you.
Thank you. Erin Hild, followed by Xyla Jones. Welcome.
Good evening, members of the Board. My name is Erin Hild, and I'm from ZIP Code 27455. And I'm here to share what I've been going through as a member of Northern Guilford's cheer team. Since July of 2025, me and other teammates have been targeted by certain athletes and parents as a part of the cheerleading community. I have been singled out by my cheer coach, athletic director, and principal of Northern. They have only made this experience worse for me. I've been punished for things that did not happen during the cheer season, and it has affected my cheer experience for my senior year. This has happened on more than one occasion. The same athletes and adults that are targeting me have been wanting to get me removed from the cheer team since February of 2025. My stepmom and dad have a close relationship with the principal and cheer coach. They have been stalking my social media and my friends' social media to get more evidence that they can get to get me removed from cheerleading. Those same athletes that are bullying me are not being held to the same standards even though they are doing the same activities as me. This feels unfair, and it has made what should be a positive cheer experience feel isolating and discouraging. No student athlete should feel bullied or singled out for different treatment. I love cheer, but it's not a supportive or fun environment anymore. I am asking the Board to please make sure that the rules are applied fairly and that every athlete is treated with the same expectations and respect. I hope this issue will be resolved. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Xyla Jones, followed by Catherine White.
Hello, my name is Xyla Jones, and I'm coming out of ZIP Code 27409. I never thought I would be standing in front of this panel asking for you to care. Throughout these past six months, I have gone through a tremendous amount of verbal abuse from the people you have hired to run Northern Guilford High School, from the principal and the athletic director. And what have you done? Nothing. My mother has been standing in a room with you all on multiple occasions asking for you to care, asking for you to do something. And what have you done? Nothing. I've been stalked by grown women. And what has happened? Nothing. So much so that I'm now suspended from cheer all because I posted a TikTok. And yet, when the athletic director's babysitter, who is also a member on the Northern Guilford Cheerleading Team, who has been bullying the team for the past six months, posts another TikTok with profanity, what happens to her? Nothing. What started as subtle disrespect has turned into so much more. Not only am I being isolated, but I am also being singled out and targeted on the account of your actions, on the account of this board not doing anything. Do you know what it feels like walking into a building where I know nobody cares about my safety? I now have a concussion because I was put in a stunt group by my coach who is friends with the bully's mom and family after my mom explained to her that I should not be in that stunt group for safety reasons. Yet she didn't care. Do you know what it feels like to have people harass you and talk about you knowing that they won't receive any sort of consequence? Because I do, and I'm tired of this. I'm a 17-year-old girl just trying to go through high school, but I'm sitting here being bullied, harassed, stalked, and this board does not care enough to do something. Would it be important if I was your kid? Would it be important if I was the one bullying someone? All I'm asking for you to do is uphold the rules you have set when it comes to bullying and harassment. Thank you.
Thank you. Catherine White, followed by our final speaker, Shaniquana Dry. Shaniquana Dry? Okay. All right, well, that concludes our public speaking portion of our meeting. Oh, I'm sorry. I hope I said your name right.
Hi, my name is Shaquana Dry, known as Shay. I come out of the 27405 ZIP Code. Good evening, Madam Chair, Board Members, and County Leadership. I stand before you tonight on behalf of Northern Guilford High School community to ask for your support of our principal, our athletic director and cheer coach, and mostly our students. I'm here this evening with several Northern families who are calling for these vicious attacks to end. I'm here representing over 20 varsity cheerleaders and their families. Together, we are united and saying enough is enough. For nearly seven months, our school has been attacked by our former cheerleader coach, her child, and her child's friend. Together, they have relentlessly targeted innocent students, parents, and staff with vicious, unfounded accusations. There have been countless investigations through false claims, and even times there have been not, no merit. These claims are simply actions of retaliation against those who have encouraged to stand up in appropriate behavior and safety concerns from our former cheerleader coaches. Our cheerleaders, our very students that we are charged to protect, have been unfairly dragged into this. This has been, they have been labeled, targeted, and distracted from what should be a positive, joyful, and team-building high school experience. And that's not the case, and it needs to end. In the midst, sorry, in the midst of this, our new cheerleader coach has been a light of our program. She has accomplished D1 Cheerleading Coach at the collegiate level. She holds a proper certification, prioritizes athletic safety above all else, models integrity, professionalism every single day. Her love for working with our students, athletes, and her passion for cheerleading shines through in everything she does. She has given our athletes not only technical skills to succeed, but also the encouragement, discipline, and confidence that will serve them far beyond cheerleading. She is especially amazing because she has done all of these things despite of the weekly attack of her character and reputation and her skills. Our principal, our athletic director, and our coaches have all acted in honor, professionalism, and the best interest of our students. And yet, the harassment continues from our former cheerleading coach and her family, who are determined to stain Northern Guilford Night-Haul's name. It is time for the district to say enough. The only stain we want tonight is the purple that we bleed at Northern. Our cheerleaders will, oh, sorry. We are asking for you, our leaders, to stand firmly behind our school, our cheerleading coach, and our cheerleaders to put an end to this cycle of false accusations and intimidation, to remind our community that bullying will not be tolerated here in Guilford County Schools. The only bullying that has to happen has happened from our former employee and her child. Today, we say stop and make falsehood enormous end. Thank you.
Thank you. And that concludes our Public Comments section for this evening. We are now at approval of the agenda. Is there a motion?
I make a motion to approve the agenda.
It's your second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we're now at the Consent Agenda. Dr. Oakley.
Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the Board. This evening's consent agenda includes the following items: Approval of August 25 meeting minutes; Personnel action report; State application for federal funds; Project ordinance revisions for construction of new and replacement schools; Project ordinance revisions for construction of new and replacement schools and deferred capital replacement projects; Guaranteed Maximum Price Amendment 1 for early release work for early abatement and demolition with DA Everett; The Crisman Company, a joint venture for the Lindley Elementary School project; Guaranteed Maximum Price Amendment 4 for the remaining for the remaining scope of work and construction project award. Prince with Vanoy McFarland, a joint venture for the Sumner Elementary School Project. Contract with Montith Construction Corporation for the Page High School auditorium and bathroom renovation project. Contractual agreement renewal with Access 411 for One Card Services. CalAmp software lease service contract renewal. That concludes this evening's agenda for your consideration.
Madam Chair, I'd like to pull item I and move the rest of the consent agenda.
Item I.
And Chrissy wants to pull item G.
Item D, please. D? Yes, thank you. So Diane, would you amend your agenda?
Yes, ma'am.
Make your motion.
I'd like to move items A, B, C, E, F, G, H, J.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Pastor Sherrals?
Aye.
Linda?
Aye.
Deborah?
Aye.
Kim?
Aye.
Diane?
Yes.
Chrissy?
Aye.
David?
Aye.
Betty?
Yes.
And Deanna, yes, that passes unanimously. So we're now, we'll start at D. Chrissy?
Thank you. I just wanted to ask Dr. Monk if he could explain this a little bit to us, just so that I have clarity and that the public can have clarity. When we look at the numbers, it looks as if we're going from ten million to sixty-nine million with an increase of fifty-nine million, which made my heart stop a little bit. And so I'd like you to kind of walk us through what these numbers actually mean so that we have clarity on that.
Yeah, thank you. Good evening. So the ten million is what's currently in the project ordinance. That's how much money we have available to spend. The fifty-nine million represents the difference between what we receive from the county and what the project budget is. And so now we're asking, now that you just approved the guaranteed maximum price for that project, so now we're going to go to ask the county to give us the remainder of the amount that we had in that budget so that we can proceed with the project.
So just for clarification, to be sure, I understand this is not asking for an additional fifty-nine million dollars to come our way towards this build. This is money that was already going to be allocated in the budget. We're just asking to have pieces of it sort of parsed out to us as we work through the building process. Is that correct?
Correct, that's right.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
All right, you want to move that item?
Yes, ready to move item D.
Second.
All right, Pastor Sherrals?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Deborah?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Chrissy?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Betty?
Yes.
And Deanna, yes. All right, Diane, item I.
Thank you. Madam Superintendent, I was wondering, and might not want to do it tonight, when we could kind of get an update on how the One Card Service is actually working? Because if I remember, we were rolling it out in increments. Is that not correct, or is it all out there now?
We did phase it in, but it was it was in full operation the past school year. But yeah, we can we can provide a report on One Card usage and access.
I mean, is it? Is it working?
It's a cultural shift. I mean, I think we, I mean, even adults aren't very good at wearing IDs all the time. And so I think we have to set expectations for having them in schools. Every new school year, we have to reset the expectation, reprint the new cards for the school year. So I would say we're not where we want to be yet, but it is a culture shift that is connected deeply to school safety.
Okay, can I ask one more question as well before? Okay. How do we stress if this, I mean, particularly with the kind of investment that we're talking that we have been giving? How do we stress how this is tied to safety?
Mr. Itchy can come speak to that.
So an ID system is pretty much integral to any safe location, especially with the number of people that we have in our schools and in our buildings. And what that is, is it gives you a very quick shot as to does this person belong here? And so that's where we're trying to get to. As y'all noticed, that we gave each of y'all a new ID today for that very same reason. What we're trying to do is get our staff wearing the IDs, then get our children wearing the IDs. To that end, one of the things that you'll notice with your new IDs is that they are going to act as fobs. And so we're going to be doing the same thing for the staff. And when we do that, the increased use there. The other thing that we have going for us this year, and it's growth, and that is Infinite Campus right now. Obviously, I think everybody knows that we've had the issues with the implementation of that as part of the state program. It was brought forth by them. But one of the things that does work is that Infinite Canvas Campus does work with Access 411. So we have the opportunity this year. Our goal is to get tappers for each classroom so it can act as an attendance piece. Again, reinforcing, to your point, that if you have it, that's how you're going to know that you're in class. And that's going to give the teachers the impetus to want to pursue wearing your ID. Because right now, honestly, it's not a fight that most of our teachers want to have. But if it serves them and they can lead by example by wearing their IDs, I think we'll see that culture shift finally come and push over.
Thank you. So then that would help us, once you have it at the classroom level, where we would be able to alert parents as to whether Johnny is in third period or not, not just whether Johnny came to school?
Exactly.
Okay.
And that is our long-term goal.
Okay, thank you. Linda?
How long exactly have we been implementing One Card?
So it started the right before I came, so that'd be just a little over four years.
Four years. I'm interested in knowing how we have expanded issues. I mean, you know, are we using it on the bus?
Certainly.
Are we doing, so I actually, I mean, Diane just beat me to it, was going to ask for an update on the One Card to see what percentage of students are you, what's what's the numbers on the use of the One Card? To see if we're making gains on making it a valuable component in our schools.
And I'll have that, I can get that number for you for a report. But as far as it goes, last year, our average in elementary school was somewhere in the seventy-five percent range, and it went down from there for middle schools and high schools. They did not use it near as effectively. As far as it goes, how have we expanded? The number one way that we've expanded is using it for High Point Transit and Greensboro Transit. So our children that cannot utilize our busing system for different reasons of all sorts, they have the ability to use this card to ride the transit system, and then we cover the cost as part of the school district to help provide their transportation.
Now, I have one more.
Sure.
You just gave me a brand-new one, okay? And it has the little fob in it. When it was on my keys, the likelihood of me losing it was actually much less. Okay, so now you've given me this little card. Yeah, and I'm a little concerned.
So I will say, I will say for those folks that don't wear it every day, you might be right that the key would be more likely. But I'm going to go against you on that in that the key breaks, and when it does, you don't know that it's broken because it was part of your keychain. So we actually lose many more fobs by percentage than we do ID cards because people, when they lose their ID card, they go looking for it because it's their name, their picture, their belonging, and they don't want that out there for anyone. When they lose the key fob, they're like, hey, we'll call safety and get a new one. And it's it really is an amazing difference. And the actual loss is much less with the ID card than it is with the fob.
And I think you are correct in that now it has the value that I needed to get in. So you may have a point there that I may be going, oh, God, where is it? I got to get in the building. So I really didn't think about that way because if I do lose it, then I can't get in the building. So, okay, you might have added value to it just a little bit.
I'm trying.
All right, thank you.
Like I said, it's a whole culture, so.
All right, no other questions?
Okay, can I ask you one other thing, though? He's running away.
I was trying, sorry.
I know, okay. Are the are the cards not used for them to access lunch?
Yes, so at certain schools, we have about three high schools and then a number of middle schools that utilize it to access lunch. But it is not used universally for lunch.
Okay, but would that increase, I mean, if you said, because because we know that in elementary school, those, there's a little more control, I'm trying to be nice about this. There's a little more control as far as the direction that the children get. I mean, they line up and they have to have those. But if if it's used for them to go to the cafeteria, I'm talking about middle and high school,
Right.
would that not increase the?
There's a possibility. I know that Southern, so I'll use Southern as an example. Southern is one of our higher-usage schools, and they use it for, they definitely use it for lunch every day to check in and out of the lunchroom. They don't use it for the monetary piece because that's not tied to that, but they use it to check into the lunchroom.
Okay. Is there any other questions? And if not, I'll move item I.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, Pastor Sherrals?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Deborah?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Chrissy?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Betty?
Yes.
And Deanna, yes. Deborah?
I didn't want to to change the vote just because I knew everybody was was okay with it. I just wanted to bring attention to the fact that in item E, we actually are returning some of our unused funds for capital for new and existing deferred capital projects. No?
Not returning.
Turn your mic on.
Clarify for me.
Yeah, not returning. But we're going to, we're going to move it to some deferred capital.
Realocating.
Realocating, yeah, there we go.
I wanted that just to be visible, that, you know, that the money that is not spent is not just kind of disappearing into the oblivion or being put in untraceable places, that we are actually putting it towards other projects. And that, you know, any overages are returned back into needed areas and don't just kind of disappear into the oblivion with with budgets and things being under scrutiny lately. These are being tracked, money is still being used, everything is put back into the appropriate places. And I want to thank you guys for a job well done coming in under the final budgets. Thank you.
Just wanted to make sure Lisa wasn't conducting any, okay. I didn't realize that Vice Chair, County Commissioner Carl Vena Foster was here. And so I would certainly have liked to recognize or why she was in the room, but want to do that now. Good evening again, and welcome to our new home at the Guilford County Schools Community Education Center. We're really excited to be here. I'm going to have to wear my glasses because people are further out there and it's spread out, so I couldn't tell who's in here, even though it's not full-full. But at least we won't have people standing up. We're excited to be here in this larger space that provides a more comfortable and accessible experience for our visitors. On a related note, I had the privilege of speaking at the ribbon-cutting ceremonies last month for Kaiser Middle and Peeler Hampton Visual and Performing Arts Elementary. And I have to get my brownie points by mentioning Nima, who is a cheerleader at Kaiser, and Nation and Kerrigan, who are new students at Peeler Hampton. These events allowed our community to see our bond dollars at work and to celebrate the progress that has been made for the students, staff, and families of those schools, who will enjoy the new buildings for decades to come, and they certainly did on those days. In partnership with the Guilford County Department of Public Health, Guilford County Schools is hosting vaccination clinics this month. There are four more scheduled for this week. The clinics are happening September tenth at nine AM at Eastern High and one PM at Southeast High. So that's tomorrow, nine AM at Eastern and one PM at Southeast High. Then on September eleventh, clinics are scheduled for nine AM at Northwest High, and this is Thursday, and then one PM at Western. So Thursday, September eleventh, the clinics are going to be nine AM at Northwest High and one PM at Western High. And you can find more information on the news section of our website, www.gcsnc.com. Guilford County Schools has claimed three of the top four spots in the annual U.S. News and World Report's high school rankings. The Early College at Guilford is ranked number one in the state and number thirty-one in the nation. It's followed by the STEM Early College at North Carolina A&amp;T State University, which is ranked number two in the state and forty-four in the nation. And Weaver Academy ranks number four in the state and two hundred and one in the nation. Additional Guilford County Schools in the top one hundred for the state are Northwest High, Penn Griffin School for the Arts, Northern High, Grimsley High, the Academy at Smith, Kern's Academy, and Page High. Congratulations to these schools and to the district. Lastly, GTCC and Guilford County Schools are partnering to provide three events this month to help parents and students understand the Career and College Promise Program, which allows students to earn college credit while in high school. The sessions will be held Wednesday, September tenth, Tuesday, September twenty-third, and Thursday, September twenty-fifth. And a flyer with registration information is going to be available on our Peachjar electronic platform and our social media channels. Links to these platforms can be found on our website. Thank you, and this concludes my remarks. Dr. Oakley, for your superintendent remarks.
Good evening, yes, and congratulations to our principal and assistant principal finalists for twenty-five, twenty-six. The finalists for Principal of the Year are Darrell Harris, Eastern High, Eric Perrier, Northeast Middle, Ashley Triplet, Peck Elementary, Nicole Weeks, Northern Elementary, and Abu Zaim, Shady Brook Elementary, but is now at Penn Griffin School for the Arts. The finalists for Assistant Principal of the Year are Maya Bell, Allen J. Elementary, Melissa Bochi, Kaiser Middle, Carrie Page, Summerfield Elementary, Beau Motley, Southeast High, Emily Stevenson from Eastern High, and Karen Williams from Eastern High. The winners will be announced at our Celebration of Excellence event on September seventeenth at the Tanger Center, which will start with a spirit parade at five-thirty, followed by the full program at six. We hope to see the community there. We've been back to school for two weeks now, and I've had the chance to visit several schools and see the great work that is already happening in our classrooms. Thank you to all parents as we navigate the changes and challenges that always come with the first few weeks of the school year. As a reminder, we welcome your questions and feedback on our Let's Talk platform, which you can access through our website at gcsnc.com. Another opportunity to connect to the district is through Campus Parent, which has replaced the Power School Parent Portal System. This tool allows you to see your child's grades, attendance, and other information. To open your account, you can go to gcsnc.com/campusparent and follow the directions. Congratulations to Eastern High School, this year's recipient of the Hubert B. Humphrey Award. The school will receive twelve thousand dollars, which it will use to focus on student support. Principal Darrell Harris says that the money will support expanded college and career readiness experiences, professional learning for teachers, and increased family engagement opportunities. Finally, I would like to invite seniors and their families to learn more about a new opportunity to skip the college application process to many North Carolina colleges and universities. North Carolina College Connect gives students with a weighted GPA of two-point-eight or above direct admission to select colleges, including Appalachian State, East Carolina, Winston-Salem State, and many others, including private colleges and all-state community colleges. A webinar for families about this new program is being held on Tuesday, September sixteenth at six PM. And you can also learn more at nccollegecollect.com. Thank you, and this concludes my remarks. And Dr. Stevens and I will now co-present the twenty-four, twenty-five accountability report. So we will share this evening the progress our students made during the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. We're going to outline priorities as we move into twenty-five, twenty-six. Our focus remains the same and clear, accelerating learning and preparing every student for the world that awaits them. We're going to discuss a high-level overview of our twenty-four, twenty-five academic performance growth, and we're going to share our school improvement efforts, outline our plan for preparing students for the world, and build on this progress and address the most critical needs of our students and our schools. It's important to pay attention to what's new this year, just like every year when the testing model changes a little bit. This year, new tests are in fifth and eighth grade science and biology, and those were just implemented this year. So we don't compare new tests to former results. So just important to know new standards, new tests in these subject areas, and you'll see that in the report. We also have re-normed end-of-grade and end-of-course science assessments. And so you'll see those science results later in the presentation. But we're going to start with how we're accelerating learning. We talk about this frequently because the research supports it. But learning to read by third grade is a pivotal milestone in a child's academic journey. It shapes future success across all subject levels. Nationally, school districts are really intensifying their focus on early literacy instruction through evidence-based practices. You've probably heard about the science of reading. These approaches emphasize that skilled reading requires both decoding and comprehension. And to meet this challenge, districts are increasingly using things like early literacy screeners to identify students early who need additional support with foundational skills, determine when more diagnostic assessments are necessary, and it helps us know when to intervene early to prevent longer-term gaps. Nationally, about sixty-eight percent of K-two students were on track with the early literacy assessment called DIBELS. Last year, we're seeing very similar growth here in GCS, which shows our focus on evidence-based instruction. What's especially encouraging is that every single student group saw these double-digit growth and some increases in some student groups like And some student groups, like our Hispanic students and our English learners, showed the biggest jumps from the beginning of the year to the end of the year. This progress is really directly tied to how we've shifted instruction in early literacy, using those early literacy screeners, the targeted interventions, and the science of reading practices. We still have lots of work to do here, though. About a third of our students are not yet meeting that benchmark goal at the end of the year, and that's why we have to continue to focus on it. Overall, it's a really positive signal, though. Students are gaining ground and setting the foundation for longer-term academic success. Now I'm going to pass it over to Dr. Stevens, who's going to go into a little more detail with the formal accountability report.
Thank you, Dr. Oakley, and good evening, board members. I'm going to begin by sharing our EOG results with you. In North Carolina, the end-of-grade tests are given in grades three through eight in reading and math, as well as science in grades five and eight to measure how well students have mastered state standards. We are excited to report that math proficiency across nearly all grade levels and student groups increased. Grades three through eight increased for every student group except students with disabilities and for every grade level except grade five. Additionally, 52 schools increased math proficiency for the 2425 school year or remained above 95% for 2324 and 2425. This includes 37 elementary schools, 13 middle schools, and two specialty schools. At the high school level, 18 schools improved Math III proficiency, which is a critical marker of readiness for higher-level math and post-secondary success. We know the pandemic had an impact on academic academics. Our math recovery efforts are continuing to show positive changes. When compared to the state, we are recovering at a faster rate in math in grades three through eight for all students and by all student groups. Our students with disabilities and economically disadvantaged students, as well as Black students, are doing better than what they did in 2018-19. When reading this graph, the blue line represents the state of North Carolina, and the teal line represents our data. In this case, the shorter line is better than the longer line and is an indication of faster recovery because the goal is to get to zero, which is the marker for the 2018-19 school, pre-pandemic school year. Reading proficiency increased across, increased overall and at every grade level for nearly all student groups. The only exception was students with disabilities, where we know additional funding for targeted support is still needed. We also had 65 schools to improve their reading proficiency compared to last year. That includes 48 elementary schools, 15 middle schools, and two specialty schools. Gains across multiple grade levels show that our investments in early literacy intervention programs and teacher training are producing results. Next up are the results from the EOC assessments. In North Carolina high schools, students take end-of-course tests in specific course subjects, including English II, High School Math I, Math III, and Biology. We increased proficiency across two out of the four EOC assessments. These include English II, Math III. All student groups, including English learners and students with disabilities, increased proficiency in both English II and Math III in the 2425 school year. Our end-of-course results show encouraging gains, particularly in Math III, which had the largest increase this year, climbing to 65.4% proficiency. English II also improved, reaching 55.1% proficiency, almost at the pre-pandemic levels. Biology, which was assessed under new state standards in 2425, saw a small decline, but again, take caution in comparing it to the previous year. Like what we observed in fifth grade, fifth and eighth grade science, Math I remains our lowest-performing EOC subject at 24.8% proficiency and continues to be an area we will provide additional support. Overall, these results show that while new standards bring short-term dips in science, we are seeing strong recovery in Math III and English II. We will continue to keep a close eye on Math I. And we know that middle school students who take Math I have not been included in the high school Math I scores for a while now. We also know that less experienced teachers are teaching Math I than Math III. Again, math proficiency continues to be a highlight, with overall results at 65.4% proficiency remaining higher than the pre-pandemic levels. Every student group improved compared to last year, with the most significant gains among English learners and Black students, who grew by more than 13 percentage points. In contrast, our Math I proficiency remains a challenge, again at 24.8% proficiency. While most groups declined slightly, both English learners and students with disabilities had increases, showing the impact of targeted supports. These results show real momentum in higher-level math, but we understand the need to strengthen Math I as a foundation for future success for our students. In third-grade math, Black students and Hispanic students grew more than 13 points, outpacing their peers. We are also seeing steady progress in reading, where Black and Hispanic students are improving at a slightly faster rate than their peers. We are proud to share that our students are showing progress in academics. This year, we saw growth in 13 out of 18 state-tested areas compared to last year. Some of the biggest gains came in third-grade math, fourth-grade reading, fifth-grade reading, and seventh-grade reading, with increases of 3 to 10 percentage points. As a reminder, a school's performance composite is all grades and assessments combined and counts as 80% of the school's performance grades. Schools across the district are improving overall. 67 schools raised their overall performance composite in 2425, and 21 schools saw increases of five points or more, which is a big step forward. This marks our highest overall performance composite since before COVID, showing that our efforts are paying off. This progress is a result of the dedication of our teachers, school leaders, families, and most importantly, our students. School performance grades are still calculated at 80% proficiency and 20% growth in North Carolina. We've noted for years that this weighting is imbalanced, and both DPI and the General Assembly are working on revisions. The goal is to shift accountability measures to better reflect the whole child and our role in workforce development. We expect more details on these changes during the upcoming school year. We've talked a lot about proficiency, which again makes up the 80% of the school performance grades. Now, I want to highlight growth, which accounts for the other 20%. Academic growth measures how much students' progress, how much progress students made over the year compared to what was expected, essentially whether students gained at least a year's worth of learning. Growth is reported in three categories: exceeded, met, or not met. For the 2425 school year, 77% of our schools met or exceeded growth. That's a four percentage point increase over pre-pandemic levels in 2018-19. This means that 86 of our schools in our district met or exceeded growth last year. The number of schools exceeding growth has steadily increased, moving from just 12 in the 2122 school year to 28 last year, the 2324 school year, and now at 24, now at 31 in the 2425 school year. That's an increase of four schools compared to pre-pandemic levels in 1819 and 19 schools since the 2122 school year. We also have schools showing consistency. We had two schools that exceeded growth four years in a row, and six have exceeded growth for three years in a row. This demonstrates not only progress, but sustainability in instructional practices. Despite the state's imbalanced grading model, which places heavy weight on achievement over growth, GCS schools made measurable progress in 2425. We continue to see steady improvement in school performance grades that reflect both rising proficiency and sustained growth. We reduced the number of schools receiving an F grade to just four, down from six last year and 18 in 2122. We also saw positive movement in the middle ranges, with more schools moving from a D to a C or higher. This steady shift shows that we are building momentum, lifting schools out of the lowest categories while growing the number of high-performing schools. We are making progress under a grading model that does not fully capture growth. We have fewer schools at the bottom and more that are moving into higher grades, and our trajectory is one of steady and sustained improvement. In North Carolina, schools designated as low-performing, a school is designated as low-performing if it earns a grade of D or F and does not exceed expected growth. This means that a school can meet growth consistently and still be labeled as low-performing. I'm going to say that again. This means that a school can meet growth consistently and still be labeled as low-performing. In 2122, more than half of our schools, about 51%, were considered low-performing. Today, that number has dropped to 36%. That's a 14.9 percentage point decrease in low-performing schools over four years. This past year alone, eight additional schools moved out of the low-performing status. We're seeing steady, meaningful progress each year, showing that our strategies are working. This trend represents more than numbers. It means thousands of students are now in stronger schools that are meeting growth expectations. It also shows that our focus on instruction, intervention, and leadership development is making a difference across the district. As we celebrate our current progress, we are also looking ahead. The State Board of Education is considering proposed changes that could significantly shift how schools are graded in the future. As was shared earlier, currently, school grades are based on 80% proficiency and 20% growth. This model has long been criticized as imbalanced and not reflective of the progress students are making. The proposed changes would create a more balanced approach, where growth plays a stronger role in school accountability. Another important change is the addition of broader measures of success. Instead of focusing almost exclusively on test scores, the model would consider things like workforce readiness, post-secondary enrollment, and career credentials. This shift better aligns with the whole-child approach and directly connects to our district's strategic direction-focused areas. For Guilford County Schools, this means our students and schools will be recognized not just for test performance, but for how well we prepare them for life after high school. It validates the work we've been doing to align academics with the parent-students-for-the-world, which you will hear more about in a few minutes and we will further discuss at our upcoming work session. I will now share the four-year cohort graduation rates. Our graduation rate stayed nearly constant at 92.1%. There was continued improvement for Black students and students with disabilities, with both groups graduating at their highest rates in GCS history. We are happy to report that GCS had 10 schools with a graduation rate of 100% and 13 of our schools had graduation rates of 90% or higher. For most of the past 10 years, GCS has consistently had a higher graduation rate than that of the state and other large districts in North Carolina, and that trend continues. Our rate of 92.1% is higher than the state's rate of 87.7%, as well as the other North Carolina districts, large districts. Next, we will discuss measures of college and career readiness. It's important to note that the ACT has not been required for application to the UNC Systems Colleges and Universities since the pandemic, but the UNC Board of Governors approved a revised policy in May of 2024. For students who went to college last year, an ACT score was not required. For students who went to college this year, if their weighted GPA was between 2.5 and 2.8, they had to submit an ACT score, but a minimum score was not required. For students entering college next year, if their weighted GPA was, is between 2.5 and 2.8, they must have an ACT score of 17 or higher. This year, the average ACT score for GCS students was 16.7, a slight dip from last year's 17.3 composite. The ACT helps us measure how ready students are for college and careers. Our students did best in reading and science, while English continues to be an area where we need to provide more support. We also see differences in scores across student groups, which shows us why it's important to expand access to strong coursework, tutoring, and college advising. Seniors who are CTE concentrators take the ACT Work Keys Assessment. Work Keys is an important measure of workforce readiness, and GCS's results for the class of 2025 for students who were CTE concentrators remain comparable to the state and other large districts. Our rate was 58.1. Research continues to show that access to post-secondary education in the U.S. remains inequitable. Students from low-income families are only half as likely to earn a post-secondary credential by age 26 compared to their higher-income peers. This gap is even wider for students of color and first-generation collegegoers who face disproportionately lower rates of success. As a district, we have the opportunity and the responsibility to change these outcomes while students are still enrolled in GCS. By accelerating their pathways to post-secondary credentials, we can directly impact their economic mobility, which means helping them to earn more than just a livable wage in their future. When we coordinate efforts at the district level, we can remove barriers and open doors to workforce-aligned credentials and college coursework that put students on track for success. This isn't theoretical. It's happening now in communities nationwide. Together, we can ensure that our students have equitable access to opportunities that lead to meaningful futures. We want our families to know that graduation is just the starting point. And again, we're going to talk more about this during the work session later this month. Switching gears to our student attendance, which has been improving across the district over the past three years. We see that overall, students attended 91% of the school days in 2425, which is up from 90.6% in 2324 and 90.2% in the 2223 school year. We also saw a slight dip in chronic absenteeism this past year, with the share of students missing 10% or more days falling below 30%, finally, for the first time in three years. This, these are encouraging signs, but we know attendance must remain a district-wide focus to keep students on track academically. Looking more closely at our chronic absenteeism rates by grade level and student groups, we see both progress and persistent challenges. High schools showed a slight decline in chronic absenteeism, moving from 36% last year to 33% this year. Elementary and middle schools, however, remained relatively flat compared to the previous year. By student group, chronic absenteeism rates for Black and Hispanic students stayed largely unchanged at 35%, while rates for white students declined slightly to 20%. The data remind us that while overall attendance is improving, we must continue targeted efforts to ensure every student is present and engaged. Every day counts, and we need every student in school every day. Again, we have made progress, but too many students are still missing too much learning time. We need all hands on deck in order to improve attendance. Now, I'm going to turn it back over to Dr. Oakley.
So you've seen some areas of progress, but at the same time, we know that we have some big challenges ahead of us. Like many districts across the state and the country, Guilford County Schools has seen a downward trend in enrollment that was accelerated by the pandemic. But we're not just going to sit and watch it happen. We're implementing different enrollment strategies to ensure that every student and family has a positive experience with GCS. We're strengthening customer service practices at the school and district level, putting practices in place for consistency that make sure families feel welcome, supported, valued the first time they engage with us. We're communicating more clearly and... We're communicating more clearly and more often with families using different platforms to share important information and to highlight opportunities across the district. Most importantly, we're expanding some innovative programming so that we continue to be the best place to learn, work, and grow. This includes those expanded career pathways, having great neighborhood schools, so that families can see that we can open doors to college, careers, and life success. So you'll hear more about that. Across the country, we know that districts are still working to help students recover academically from the pandemic, remembering that the system wasn't working for all students before the pandemic, and it's no exception here. The good news is we are seeing some steady improvements in some areas. Kids are making gains, and we have more schools than we have in the past meeting or exceeding growth, which means a great deal. At the same time, we must be very clear-eyed that student gaps remain. These gaps mirror trends. These are systemic challenges, not just for school systems, but for housing, transportation, and healthcare across our state and across our country. We're not alone in this work, but we're committed to being a leader and working across these systems to make a difference. Chronic absenteeism, while we saw bits and pieces of progress, it does still remain one of the most pressing challenges. Nearly one in three students is still missing 10 or more days of a school year. And when students are absent that often, they miss instruction that just can't be replaced by a makeup work or a task to redo. That's especially true in early grades when we're building those foundational skills. If students can't read by third grade, their chances of graduating on time drop dramatically. Attendance is not just about showing up. It's about making sure that they can access opportunities that we're able to provide, including those high-quality instructional practices, advanced placement and dual enrollment so they can earn free college credits, CTE programs, apprenticeships, internships to provide them for high-demand careers, and scholarship opportunities like SFAFSA completion that make college more affordable. We want families to know that we're working tirelessly to provide high-quality programs, teaching, and opportunities, but none of it matters or works if kids are not in school. The message is pretty simple, that every single day matters. When students are in school, they're not just learning for today. They're building the foundation for their future success in college, career, and life. We continue to talk about concentrated poverty across systems here in Guilford County. This is really evident when we compare the number and percentage of schools in the large North Carolina districts that were approved to participate in community eligibility provision for 2526. As a point of comparison, Wake County Public Schools, as we know, is very demographically different than Guilford County, as is Charlotte Mecklenburg. Wake has 22% designated community eligibility schools. Charlotte has 63%, and Guilford has 91%. We also have a much higher percentage of schools participating in programs to provide free breakfast and lunch at these eligible schools. And if you look at the map, these schools are not just now in one area of our county, but they're now spread nearly across all of the areas of our county, underscoring how concentrated poverty affects not just school, but communities throughout Guilford County. Food insecurity has increased by 5% in Guilford County over the last two years. And while our 24, 202425 accountability results are often compared with the largest districts in North Carolina, we know that demographically, the playing field is different from county to county when we think about the poverty that our families face. Most of these trends have been true since pre-pandemic. Looking ahead, though, one of our biggest challenges and therefore a top priority that our board has spent some time discussing and will continue is the uncertainty of the future around the federal funds in Title II, Title III, and Title IV. These are funds we have depended on year after year to support critical priorities for students and schools. If those dollars are not dispersed to states and districts in 2627, we will face difficult decisions on how to maintain the people and program and services that our students and families and teachers rely on. These dollars directly support things like teacher quality, English learners, and student supports, and without them sustaining our progress will be difficult. Adding to this concern, we did appeal a $15 million federal mental health grant, and the appeal was recently denied. So this loss will place additional strain on our ability to provide those wellness and support services for students who have benefited greatly from those supports since the grant was earned. It will now be terminated in December of this year. Recent research shows that money matters for students' educational outcomes and that cuts in federal funding will have a greater impact on the states who are most reliant on these funds, which are mostly states that serve high proportions of students who live in poverty. On the screen, you can see that North Carolina stands to lose, stands to lose close to over $133 million, which will directly impact services in our school district. So just some context there about where we sit. So lots to digest, just a few district highlights for takeaways from the accountability piece. We have more schools who are meeting or exceeding growth. We continue to experience graduation success across student groups. We have an increase in advanced placement course enrollment and in our dual enrollment. So students are taking advantage of opportunities to earn college credit while they're with us, and we hope that continues to grow. We had a record number of scholarship dollars earned, a big increase, really, close to $50 million over the past two years. And we had an increase in the SFAFSA completion rate, which we know helps students and their families reduce debt after they leave us for graduation. So with that, we are happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Chrissy, then Diane.
Thank you so much for this report. I know this data just came out, and this was a lot to put together very, very quickly. So thank you. This, this is the kind of thing that I really enjoy getting to see. So I have a couple of questions. Back on slides eight and 10, it talked about for the, both math and reading, we had increases in all student groups except for students with disabilities in both of that. And I'm wondering what's happening there? Why are our students with disability numbers going down in both reading and math?
So we haven't done a full evaluation yet, but there's a few factors that are just real. It's our fastest-growing student population. So many, many families leave, go to charter, realize they don't have to be served in the same way, and then come right back. And that is true, I mean, it's just a true thing. So our English learners and our students with disabilities are fastest-growing student populations. Also, and the state is aware of this, but we only get funded for students with disabilities at 13.5%, no matter how much of our student population is classified as students with disabilities.
Can you, can you repeat that? That feels like a really important sentence to repeat.
So the funding formula is the same no matter how many students you're serving. So LEAs or school districts get funded at 13.5% for students with disabilities of their population, regardless of whether it's closer to 16%. And that means teaching positions. So we've had to increase the caseload for our special education teachers. We've had to stop providing some programming that we were able to provide when we had more of the federal dollars to be able to put towards that. And so I know it's on the state radar, but it's going to be a real problem here. And I mean, this community is really proud of how we serve students with disabilities, keeping in mind that we have four public separate schools that people move here to attend. So I think all of these things are just kind of creating this perfect storm. And so I don't think we should expect increased performance when we're decreasing resources and increasing teacher caseloads, but we know it's a real problem.
Okay, thank you. That was a very helpful explanation. And that sounds like maybe an action item that the board could be advocating with the state to try to get that to work a little bit better. On slide 12, it talked about the high school math testing. I think, yeah. And I know in the past, we've talked a lot about the Math I scores, and Math III hasn't seemed to have been on the radar as much, if my memory is serving me correctly. And I'm wondering, out of our school populations, how many students are taking Math III? I know Math I is sort of, you know, a lower-level type of thing that everybody's expected to take, but everybody's not taking Math III, right? Or are they?
Yeah, Math III became a part of the state accountability model two to three years ago.
Okay.
So it's a required EOC, and it's now a part of the accountability model. The things to point out about Math I, there's a ton of work to do here. There has been for a long, long time. This board's talked about it for decades. We, we have fewer students taking Math I in middle school, but we still have several, and those scores don't count here. And I also think we need to pay very close attention to who's teaching Math I.
I was going to ask about that.
Schools often have more experienced teachers delivering the content in Math III and put beginning and lateral entry teachers in Math I, and I think these scores are reflective of that.
Okay. And is there something we can do about that?
Yeah, I mean, I think we can make sure they know we know who's teaching it. We have prioritized professional learning dollars in Math I. It's also important to make sure kids have access to grade-level instruction and not go back to practicing multiplication facts with ninth graders. That doesn't work either. And so I think all of those things remain true, and some of them we're clearly paying attention to because one in four is not okay.
My next couple all kind of tie together, so let me see if I can consolidate this. So this is what I wrote down. High school graduation, the high graduation rate of 92.1 seems to be a little bit in conflict with having one-third of our schools be low performing, and then also one-third of our students in high school being chronically absent. It looks like we have one of the highest graduation states in the rate, in, bleh, graduation rates in the state, but we do still have that large chunk of low-performing schools and that large chunk of chronically absent. So is that graduation rate really indicating? Are we really accurately preparing students for life after high school, I think is what I'm trying to ask?
We're going to dig a little bit deeper into that in the work session. But we also know that a score on one test on one day is not a whole indicator of whether a kid is ready or not. So there's lots of other factors to consider there. I do believe that we are preparing students when we look at GPA and we look at persistence through courses, and we look at the number of students who are passing those courses later in high school. We talked a little bit about credit recovery and how that can be a thing too. But we have many other measures to look at that support that we are graduating students who are ready, and that's part of that kind of Guilford guarantee post-secondary readiness that we're going to dig a little bit deeper into on the 23rd.
Okay. And I don't think I saw any, I saw the comparison of attendance rates and graduation rates against other districts, but I don't think I saw it with like just general scores, actual performance scores. Is that something we'll dig into in the work session to see where we stand against our neighbors?
So it depends on which neighbor. It's in there a couple times. There's also some in the appendix that you'll see in the back. And then you can also filter in the, on the school report card and click the counties. I will say, though, that keep that demographic piece in mind. So we're more like Durham and Winston than we are Wake and Charlotte Mecklenburg, but there's really nuanced demographic things. That's kind of why we're a part of the great Council of Great City Schools, where we can compare our data to other districts that look like ours, which we'll be able to do when they release their key performance indicators as well.
Okay, thank you. And then my last question is kind of a broad question, which certainly can get a broad answer. But what are we doing to incentivize our schools? You know, we've got some schools that have done a really great job of pulling themselves out of the depths and really come up, you know, significant letter grades. And so what are we doing to reward the schools that have done a great job and also incentivize others for the upcoming year?
That's a long answer. And so I will tell you, one thing that we do is put their name on the screen in this room in front of their peers. That works. And they take pictures of it, and then they text each other about it. And then also like individual, well, now that we're going to have individual school and teacher growth, we're thinking through ways of like a placard outside the classroom, or, you know, they love the banner things. We'll do some of it at Celebration of Excellence, but we're also open to other ideas. You don't always want to pit one group against the other. Like in a high school, for example, there's only four subject areas that are part of this accountability model, but the other teachers and their performance matters too. So it's kind of a balance. But we use a little healthy competition, and we did that at our first principals' meeting. And then we'll continue to think of ways that we can celebrate schools. I think Eastern winning the Herbert Humphrey Award spoke to some of their growth. Southern Paige Central saw some really good gains. Ferndale's in the top percentages in the state for the second year in a row. You know what I mean? So six schools have exceeded growth three years in a row. So we, we're celebrating those things publicly, but you're right, we need to continue to do that.
Excellent. Thank you so much. This was a very helpful report. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Diane, and then Kim.
Okay. My question is in reference to page 12. And I, and I think my colleague kind of alluded to this. Can we get assistance for the Math I teachers? I think you said that that's where you're least qualified, not qualified, least experienced?
I think we need to do a more in-depth look at it, but it, it just seems to always look like, you know what I mean? And so since the middle school bank scores are no longer in there, it means you have the students who have always struggled in math, starting in fifth grade, taking Math I in ninth grade. And, and so it, the assistance that we've provided is shoulder-to-shoulder coaching, job embedded professional learning, high-quality instructional materials. And we still aren't quite seeing, like if I knew what the answer was, we would have done it. But I, I really believe we need to take a look at what math subjects are most experienced and most effective teachers are teaching, and look at the master's schedule to see how we can address that. Because to me, this says something's going really well in Math III. Those are the same kids that took Math I two years ago. So that's what we need to figure out.
Okay, but did we not try to do some course correction by trying to?
Eliminate foundations?
Yeah. Have the, I, I think the word that your predecessor used is that if the child has the aptitude, didn't necessarily mean that they understood what three plus three went, meant. But if they had the aptitude, then there would be some way to make sure that in middle school they got better support foundations. I, I mean, do you understand what I'm trying to ask you?
Not really.
Okay. That should, I think it's kind of a burden to expect in ninth grade that children who have not had the foundation in middle school to do well in ninth grade. And I thought that's what we established about five years ago.
Well, and we did the same thing for fifth, sixth graders who didn't do well in fifth grade by having these high-quality instructional resources and spend a lot of money on professional learning for teachers. And so we're still seeing the numbers that look like this, which to me says we need to look at who specifically is delivering the instruction, because they can do it in Math III. What needs to happen in Math I? Would you want to add anything?
But it sounds like to me what needs to happen in middle school, because if ninth, if ninth grade is where Math I is required, then if they're not, if they're not at the starting line when they get to ninth grade, then something's not happening in middle school. Is that?
That's correct, yeah.
Okay. So you get me now?
Yeah, I mean, I think the same students who struggle on the fifth-grade math EOG are probably the same students who are not proficient on the Math I EOC. But who is teaching them what really matters? And that's what we have to keep a close eye on.
All right. So, okay, I'll, I'll leave it until we have the work session on that one. Okay, on page 14. A few years ago, and I think you were, we, you talked about, and you may talk about this in the work session, about the fact that the reading scores, I think it was in ninth grade, that African-American children were at the bottom in Hispanic, Asian, white. And yet we, and that was something, if I recall, you said that this has been a long-term problem. Have we seen any progress in that yet?
Well, this shows that our Black and Hispanic students are growing faster than their peer groups, which proves that groups, which proves that if we improve instruction and what our Black and Hispanic students are receiving, we raise, we raise the outcomes for all students. And that's what we have to continue to do more of. But you can see that that happened in English too, and it happened in reading in grades three through eight. But it needs to happen in math too.
Okay. But at least we are making progress in the reading.
This shows progress for sure, yeah.
Okay, this is page, I can't, I think it's 44. How do we help parents understand their child's growth? I mean, I know you, you talked about the growth of the school, but how do we help parents understand growth or is it even a discussion we have with parents?
It is a discussion that teachers have with parents. The problem with this data is it's already old. So like when we get growth data for fourth grade, they've already met their fifth-grade teacher. You know what I'm saying? And so it's important, like it's our job to make a year's worth of growth. They come to school 180 days, that we, we owe them a year's worth of academic growth. It's an interesting measure because it's compared to all the other students in the state. And so it's compared, did you make a year compared to your other, your peers across the state who's had the same starting place as you? So we talk about a year's worth of growth, but it's, it's a pretty kind of nuanced term. But we do, because we talk about, what they set, like an aim line at the beginning of the year when you have a first conference. We say if you meet expectations by the time we're at the middle of the year, you should be here, this many words per minute, or whatever the measure is. And so teachers do have those conversations in conferences. They're also a part of parent report scores with different kinds of assessments.
Okay, so they, they do have a visual as to what growth is, and it's not just a word. It's, it's something that that parent can see, either, either by documentation or test results or all of the above, right?
And also or not. So if they're not meeting expectations at the middle of the year, or they're not expected to meet where they're supposed to be, we have to tell them that too.
Okay. No, this is page 18. Did, did the schools that sustained growth consistently, did they get additional resources and help?
No. It's kind of a wait-to-fail model at the state level. The, the resources and help don't come when you're doing well. I will say like that, like the restart model is an okay example where we're able to use a little bit of funding flexibility to have highly qual, like highly effective teachers reach larger number of students. Ferndale's a good example of that. And that doesn't get taken away once you start doing well and have that restart status. But there's not like this early intervention, oh, we can tell these schools aren't doing well, let's give them more resources. That's not what happens.
Okay, so, but you have a way of knowing what has worked to have the schools that have consistently sustained. They, they have to have something in their Kool-Aid that helps them to stay there, don't they?
Strong instructional people running the building.
Okay. Next page. Oh, it, is the, is the low-performing designation, is it really merited? Because you have, you've had some of the same schools stay in that lowest category for a while. Is it really merited or is that just, that's how we've measured it? Do you understand the question?
Yeah, I say, I would say the same thing about the grading model. So to me, growth is the measure where we should pay the most attention. Are schools making one year's growth or more with all student groups? I think that the low-performing status isn't necessarily fair, because you can meet growth three years in a row and still be low performing. And that's part of what they're considering in that new accountability model. You have to currently exceed growth or change a whole letter grade, which is really hard for student, schools that are in these hyper-segregated areas of poverty to be able to do. It happens. Johnson Street has gone up a letter grade for two years in a row and has succeeded growth. We have six schools who's, it happens, but the model is imbalanced.
Okay, all right. Because I'm concerned about, you know, as you said, that, you know, the, the staff is watching us and I, I, I am concerned that if it's not merited for the low-performing schools to be tagged that way, what else can we do? I, I hear you saying you're acknowledging that they do have growth, but is there anything else that we can do that encourages whatever it is they need to be doing?
Well, I think we have to tell the story of the great neighborhood schools that we have that are serving kids well. And I also think we have to make sure that these changes at the state level actually happen. Because it's people, it's real easy to throw a grade on a school and not tell the story behind the school.
All right. Well, then you understand where I'm coming from as far as that part?
Yeah.
All right. Next one is on page 24. Why is it that it appears that only our acad, our academies and middle colleges had 100%? Is it because they have smaller school sizes or?
We haven't done a full evaluate. It's easier to find kids when there's not as many of them. It's easier to know who's missing. It's easier to do the home visit when they don't show up three days in a row. It's easier to have the relationship at the parent level. There are just some things that come with size and scope, I think. But I mean, I think if you look at the 90% or higher, they're figuring out something too. Andrews saw a big jump in their graduation rate this year.
Well, I, I just, I just, you know, don't want it to be missed that all of the schools that are 100% are, are either academy or middle colleges, which are smaller than our regular high schools and, you know, it's, it, I think, as you have pointed out, that makes a difference, I think.
Well, and remember, they take college classes their last two years. And so it's just like the model of when they finish their high school classes and how you can monitor and keep an eye on that matters too.
Okay. This question can wait for an answer to, for the work session, but I, I want to know what is our percentage of students that graduate with lower than a 2.5?
We'll have that for you.
Okay. This is page 38. How, do we have the ability to bridge the, the move from the credentialing to better economic outcomes? Because once they walk across this stage, technically they're not ours anymore, but?
No, but what they leave that stage with is our job. And that's what we're gonna talk more about.
Okay, but, but what I'm talking about is now that they've got that, what they're leaving across the stage with, do they just walk out into the abyss or do we help them?
Yeah.
Accomplish what we said that the credentialing is supposed to help them with?
Well, so now there's a required career development plan. There's all these like new checks and balances in place. That's what our work session is gonna focus on, is how we see them to the next step and how parents have said that they want to know what the options are much earlier. And so making sure that we do that. But we, that, that is, I think, where our momentum is and what we can do better than our competition. And so that's what we're gonna spend some more time talking about.
Okay, I'm almost done. Page 45. Are we talking with the other governmental entities about these impacts? Because, you know, when you identify the, the concentrated poverty and, you know, those kinds of things, that, that's not a GCS problem alone. Have we had communications with the other governmental entities, whether it's City of Greensboro, City of High Point? You know, because this is a we problem. This is not a our problem.
I mean, I think we did a year ago, but we have not had systems-level conversations. But we are trying. We're, we are taking the lead on convening those groups to have that conversation.
Okay, well, is there a way as the elective board that we can help with that? I mean, I, oh, okay.
Yes.
So Dina's got it.
She's, she's on it.
No, I'll just tell you how you can help. Road to 10,000 can't go in one neighborhood.
Well, that's true. That's true. And then my last one is actually just a compliment to, 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 this is kind of in reference to the last page, but I, I've enjoyed and appreciate the PR that you, that your, your staff has been doing, the little stories about the schools. I think I've seen Allen, I've seen Dudley a hundred times, Smith, you know, I think that's the kind of stuff that you're saying, can we, I know it's, it takes work to put that together, but can we, you know, pump that up as far as the, some of the schools that people aren't aware of?
It costs money.
Oh, okay.
To produce those things. But we, we have targeted 45 schools in terms of enrollment strategies, and those are the commercials that you're seeing. And we are gonna continue to focus on those throughout the year, because we need to tell the great stories of, that are happening in neighborhood schools. We've got parents telling them, school staff, and so you'll see more of them. And we can geocode those in neighborhoods where not all the students are attending that could be attending. And so it's, it's real strategic. And this year, we're focused on 45 schools with that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kim, and then Deborah.
Yeah. In reference to page 6, early literacy gains, you mentioned that one-third of the students approximately are not meeting benchmark. And I would like to know, is there a connection to poverty? Do we know who those students are? And are we looking to have strategies that actually target that one-third?
Well, I think that's the systems-level work. I mean, I think, I, I know there's some advocacy around pre-K and a connection between students who have an early childhood experience. But we also know that students across racial groups are coming to school less ready. So students who know their letters and numbers in kindergarten, that number has gone down, but they're still able to kind of make these gains. There's, there's all kinds of, you know, there's Ready for School, Ready for Life that's happening that we partner with. We're spending a lot of time on that transition to kindergarten, like how to make that a smooth transition and parents know what they can do at home to help support students to be ready for kindergarten. But it's an ongoing, I mean, it's an ongoing effort for sure. I don't know that that answers your question, but yeah, it's on the radar. But it's, it's gonna take not just educators to, to turn that.
Are there any recommended materials for me to know as a parent what my child needs to know by kindergarten?
Yes, and we handed out backpacks with them and we went all over the place and gave them out and like, here's the questions to ask, here's what active reading looks like, the front of the book, the back of the book. So there's a whole like list of things that, that we pushed really heavily on with incoming kindergarten. But we're also going out to preschools and private care providers to give them the materials and to answer their questions and trying to have more of those transition meetings where they come and visit the school before they're actually school age.
I love it.
Yeah.
When we talked about the, when you talked about the math grade on page 8, you said that except fifth grade, every grade level increased. So whatever happens in fifth grade, it looks like middle school is doing a good job at recovery, because you said they increased even in high school.
Well, it just depends. Like unfortunately, the truth is, there's always a dip. And it's really hard to predict, right? Like I, it would be great if we knew exactly why this particular cohort of students, but that's why we have to watch the cohort and not the grade level.
Okay.
So what happens to these fifth graders when they go to sixth grade math? That matters more than, you know what I mean? Because then we're addressing the actual kid in a way that's more meaningful than, but we have to do that at scale for all groups at all schools.
Okay.
Yeah.
I just want to say that 13.5% of the funding for special students with disabilities has been flat.
Forever.
IDA says that they should fund 40% of the average per pupil cost. And no matter who's been elected, since IDA was initiated and passed, our government has failed, no matter who's been elected. So I think this is the advocacy, that they've never funded students with disabilities, even when the law says they should give us 40%. They've not met it. So that's the advocacy. No matter who gets elected, that's the advocacy that has never happened since IDA has come into play. And I would like to add also that those schools that have 100% engagement, 100% graduation, it's probably parent engagement. I had two children that attended two of those schools. And what parent engagement looks like for these particular schools and our larger comprehensive schools, I believe that's the missing element of why they have 100% graduation rate. Thank you.
Thank you, Deborah.
All right, to piggyback on the question earlier, on page 8, where we say we're, we're seeing increase in math proficiency for everything except fifth grade. Did, did fifth grade move at all? Did we go up, down, or did we stay right where we were?
I think it was a slight decrease from the previous year, like less than, it was a very small margin.
Okay. And then just up above it, the students with disabilities. I know that Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools has had to cut a lot of their EC positions. Have you seen or are we anticipating an increase in those classroom numbers?
Of students per classroom?
No, EC.
Of students per EC classroom?
Yeah. Or just general enrollment?
We haven't seen big increases yet, but I would wait till the 20th day to see what those numbers look like, because families may still be changing their mind. You know what I mean?
Sure.
We have been able to hire some EC teachers and math teachers
Good.
as a result, but we haven't had an analysis of increased specific population growth and probably won't till we're closer to the 20th day of school.
Okay. Just a second, my Math 1 question got answered. I believe that was all. Everything else that I wanted to add.
And the, I've been corrected. They, we don't get 13.5%, we only get 13%. So it's worse than I shared.
Most of the individuals on the board have taken care of a large portion of my questions and focus on, as the superintendent knows, I've, I've already questioned the Math 1. What I want to make sure we don't do is strip what we're doing in Math 3 and, and, and then we end up with
Flip-flop.
flip-flops. So what we need to do is figure out how they're teaching up here and train strong teachers down here, additional teachers, how to do it. On page 27, that's a concern to me, and I'm not sure I'm on board for, with it, where we're saying changes to the ACT admissions requirement at UNC Systems, where they're basically not requiring ACT, correct?
Well, they are if, for 26, 27, if they have that GPA between 2.5 and 2.8, but they did not have a minimum since the pandemic up through 25, 26.
Okay. Because here, well, in community college, where, where do they sit with this? They don't have, have to have an ACT for community college, correct?
No.
So they just have to have a?
They have a minimum GPA.
Exactly. Okay. Here's where I'm going with this. We're putting a lot of kids into college that, number one, may not be mature enough to deal with it, may not have the basis to deal with four-year. I had one that went to two years of community college. And they come out with a lot of debt. I know that my son's, has some friends that went for a couple of years, got in, you know, just because you drop out, the debt doesn't go away. Okay? So I want to make sure that we're concerned and also about getting, if we're going to school, you know, whether it be community college or four-year, our goal is to come out where we can make enough money that we can pay off the debt that we've got and survive. And colleges have gotten ridiculously expensive. So, and I hope some So, and I hope somehow the federal government figures out how to deal with that, because really, um, four-year college is getting out of step unless you can get a full ride for this, that, or the other. And it is very risky for these kids to go into a four-year school and accumulate all that debt, and then come out and try to survive on a minimum wage or a twenty-dollar wage. And then they're still expected to do that. So this page is very concerning to me that we are, we need to make sure these kids understand, yes, we want them to go to college, and we want them to be successful, all right? But going to community college for two years, okay? And then transferring into, uh, four-year, they come out with the same degree and a whole lot less money. And if they can live at home and go to college, it's, and we really need to explain that to them. I don't think we're doing a good job of them understanding. If you go to college, there's a price tag on that. And you don't, you want to come out on the other end so that you are not stuck with that debt and nothing to show for it. So, uh, reading this is just concerning to me, and I think we need to do a, a much better job of educating our students financially, that this path, go two years to community college. I would encourage anybody at the cost that we currently see in our colleges to go to community college. As a parent, my youngest one went for two years. We basically, with the tax credit, didn't pay anything. I mean, that's how affordable community college is for most students. And then what, if they don't, it's also a good way to mature, because mine was not ready to tackle, uh, four-year can be very overwhelming. And high school does not place that accountability on our students like we need to maybe the senior year that says, there's no makeups. I said it's due here, is it due here? Because when they get to high school, that's gonna happen. So I'm just really concerned, it seems like we're lowering the, um, expectations here. And I don't think that's a good thing. So that would be my, my spill.
I just have a, um, a question on page six. So, beginning of year twenty-twenty-four to end of year twenty-twenty-five, I want you to look at between black and white students, that where they were end of year twenty-twenty-five and where white kids were beginning of year twenty-twenty-four. So that says to me that there were two percentage points between those two, right? Now, I doubt that their ability, cognitive, socioeconomics changed, right? They probably didn't. So this really points to some systemic issues that we could have done that earlier, and the gap would be almost closed. And I'm wondering, when we sit with this, because I think if we don't take people through processes where they can think through this themselves and ask them, what are the possible explanations? Because it shows you that the students could do that. And why didn't we move them before? And what would they say? Because if they don't know where their answers are, then they can't do anything about it. If they don't have to say it to themselves, then they can't change it the way that they think about kids and their performance and their ability. So this gap grew, even though tremendous progress and recovery was made. But then the gap could have been so close to being closed, but it wasn't. And they had the potential to do that, because we can see it right here. So what are we doing? I, I know there's a whole lot of things that go on that are beyond our control, but this says there's something that we had the ability to impact, and we didn't. And I, I really want to invite us to engage our instructional leaders and our, our school leaders to just sit with that. Because this points to us. Okay? And that, I, I'm, I so appreciate the research that, that we have available to us to even understand concentrated poverty, but to a lot of people, it's a real sort of, it's overused, it's an academic institutional concept. What does that mean? Right? And I think we need to explain that. I don't know if, I don't know if we said that to half the staff in schools, if they could explain it. Right? So concentrated poverty really looks at census tracts. So the whole United States has been broken down into census tracts because you can, you get more information from census tracts. Zip codes, we heard zip codes given tonight from our speakers, some of them have a hundred thousand people in there. Some of them, the census tracts have like eight thousand, or four thousand, or maybe even twenty-five hundred, so there's a lot we can get from that. So concentrated poverty looks at the spatial distribution of socioeconomic sort of conditions. So in a census tract, I live in Census Tract 1112. I looked at the USDA last night and today, and there's a little red box when I put my address in, and it's in a food desert, right? So food insecurity is on here somewhere. So you can put your address in, and you can see that you live in a low-income, low-access-to-food area. And so when forty percent of the people in your neighborhood live in those conditions, you live in concentrated poverty, which is different from just being poor. Because if you're poor in some areas that aren't concentrated, you do better. You live longer, you have better educational resources, you have access to food and good infrastructure, even though you yourself are experiencing incredible hardships. So being poor versus living in concentrated poverty, and then particularly, forty percent is like hyper, or, or, or hyper-segregated, hyper-intense poverty. Twenty percent is considered concentrated. So if you're below that twenty percent range, your circumstances can change. I don't know if we have the data now, but at one point, and I bet it's true today, we have the highest number of inexperienced teachers.
Yeah, it's, yeah.
Transferring into our.
Lowest performing.
Lowest performing schools. We also know, because we've been in panels all summer, that everybody's trying to get out of these schools in these neighborhoods. Right? So, um, so that's also a conversation that I think is important to have and really break that down with our staff, because you can look at some poor kids and say, well, their family's on assistance. But if you're on assistance in a good census tract, your life is gonna be different. If you're, you know, poor in a, in an impacted, un-concentrated poverty census tract, we talked about the hypertension in elementary school-aged children last board meeting, and that impacts your motor skill function, your cognitive development. It affects your learning. So when you're in a twenty to forty percent and more concentration of poverty neighborhood, you're already predisposed to certain, um, stressors and barriers that are lifelong. And when our instructors understand all of those factors, then they won't see them as personal choices and decisions. And when you don't blame people for being sick or poor, then you're more compassionate, sympathetic, and believe in them. And so I don't want us to talk about concentrated poverty like it's just poverty, because it's not. There's a big, big difference. And, um, and I, I, I hope that we'll just spend some time unpacking this with people, because it really can change the way that you think, and that changes the way you instruct. It changes the way you give information, as we were talking about counselors. And so I just see it all embedded in here. But I, I'm excited about, and I, I praise everyone for the hard work in making these gains. It says a lot. And I'm not taking away from that by saying "and," not "but." Okay? So thank you. Anything else? David?
Yeah, just on page forty-four, uh, chronic absences by student group. And what's interesting is, to me, is that in two thousand eighteen, nineteen, it was a problem, but it was much less of a problem. It's clearly pandemic-related. For Black and Hispanic students, basically, there's been no movement. There's been a little bit of marginal movement with other groups. And I'm wondering, um, you know, what efforts are being made just to understand why this is happening? If we understand it, maybe we have a chance of dealing with it. But I think it's not enough just to say it's pandemic-related. Pandemic's over, and still we have these accelerated, very high rates.
Well, I was wondering too, if, you know, um, there are a lot of people working remote now, that, you know, more so than before, just because it's convenient. And I was just wondering also if that had something to do with people are like, well, just stay home.
Yeah.
Because I'm home. Before, when you had to physically go to work, it's just like, well, take some tissue and some Benadryl and go to school.
Yeah. I mean, that's what people say. It's like, it's all of a sudden just easier to just stay home than it was before, which is not a great answer at all. But we also did some things, like, we put instruction on a computer and gave them all a computer. You know what I mean? Things that we didn't do before that perhaps created some enabling conditions to be able to make up the work without the hassle of going to the office to get the papers. And so I think it's like a compounding series of circumstances that has led to this. But it looks like this, um, it, across the country, which is fascinating. So we'll continue to, to answer, ask questions about it. Elementary kids are a little easier to incentivize to come to school. Like, your class won the attendance award this week, you get a popcorn, like, they, but I, I mean, we have, other, other schools are trying to do things too. But you're right, we haven't seen a lot of traction. It's clear when it started, it's clear who it's not improving for. So I, I, I don't think this is some, a challenge that's going away anytime soon, which is why we have it on the priority list. But we don't, I don't have a great solution either. Uh, but there are schools who have seen some progress, and so we are asking them, like, what specifically? Like, a call from the principal or a call from your teacher before four PM is likely to do something different than, um, a recorded message that we didn't see you in fourth period. You know, some of that personal touch stuff matters too.
All right, well, thank you very much. This was, um, really good and thorough. All right, we're now at, uh, the committee reports, I'll turn to the policy committee. Oh, right after this. Sorry.
Since Attorney Wilson's about to jump out of her seat, if you want to go ahead and do it. Hang on, Jill, we're getting there. At our, uh, August twenty-seventh meeting, the policy committee voted to publish three policy recommendations for thirty-day public comment from September the ninth through October the ninth. The policy revisions are part of the comprehensive legal review of our policies. The policies with proposed revisions are Policy 7340 Substitutes, Policy 7440 Employee Assignment and Transfer, and Policy 7441 Assignments and Transfer Classified. As a reminder, you can view the policy revisions in detail on the policy committee report on the board agenda. And, and they will be featured on the GCS website and social media chan- uh, channels after this meeting. These policy recommendations will come back to the board for consideration at our October meeting, uh, after the public has had a chance to give input.
Thank you, any questions?
All right. Thank you. Board member comments, and, uh, let's see. Oh, I'm s- Boy, I'm trying not to do that, am I? All right, I'm gonna turn to Board Member Vice Chair Betty Jenkins.
You'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda?
So move. Second.
Okay, now I'm ready. I move to amend the agenda to include the consideration of the three real estate offers and amendment to the superintendent's contract.
Second.
Thank you.
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, I thought you were gonna read something, I'm sorry. All those in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed, all right, that passes unanimously.
Thank you.
I know, I think he is. I know.
Looking at property first?
Yeah.
All right. Well, then I would like to make a motion regarding the sale of surplus property remnant Pilot Elementary School, at Pilot Elementary School. And I move that the Guilford County Board of Education, the board, accept the purchase price of fifteen hundred dollars from Robert C. Ferrioli and wife Margaret Scott Ferrioli for the sale of surplus real property located at forty-eight hundred Chimney Springs Drive, Greensboro, North Carolina, identified as PIN number seven-eight-three-two-five-nine-three-six-seven-two, and consisting of approximately point-three acres, being a portion of that certain real property described in deed book forty-two sixty-four, page thirteen ninety-nine, and plat book one-twenty-one, page one hundred, Guilford County Registry, the registry, and that the board authorize the administration to proceed with all activities necessary to complete the sale of this property.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, thank you.
I've got one. I would also like to make a motion about sale of surplus property for a remnant associated with Shady Brook Elementary School. I move that the Guilford County Board of Education, the board, accept the purchase price of one thousand dollars from David N. Allen for the sale of surplus real property located at five oh-three Shady Brook Road, High Point, North Carolina, identified as PIN number six-eight-nine-two-six-two-five-one-six-five, and consisting of approximately zero-point-six-plus-or-minus acres lying north of US Highway three-eleven, being a portion of that certain real property described in deed book twenty-four thirty, page seven sixty-one, deed book twenty-four forty-seven, page two oh-five, deed book twenty-four forty-seven, page two sixty-nine, deed book twenty-four forty-seven, page two ninety, and plat book forty-eight, page fifty-four, Guilford County Registry, the registry, and that the board authorize the administration to proceed with all activities necessary to complete the sale of this property.
Second.
Thank you all, in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, that passes.
Sale of surplus property, uh, remnant Jamestown Middle School. I move that the board, that the Guilford County Board of Education accepts the purchase price of fifty-five thousand dollars from Paul Kevin Kessler for the sale of surplus real property located at forty-eight fifteen Harvey Road, Jamestown, North Carolina, identified as PIN number seven-eight-two-one-nine-five-nine-one-one-twelve, and consisting of approximately five-point-fifteen, uh, plus-or-minus acres lying north of Jamestown Parkway, being a portion of that, uh, uh, certain real property described in deed book six-three-seven-five, page one-seven-six-nine, deed book six-four-two-four, page number two-four-nine-zero, and the plat book one-seventy-six, page eighteen, the Guilford County Register, Registry, and that, and that the board authorizes the administration to proceed with all activities necessary to complete the sale of this property.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that passes unanimously.
Madam Chair, can we just have a, a point of clarification that, that folks understand, if it's okay, uh, Attorney Wilson, that the prices of these properties is the best that we can get? That we're not giving away five-point-five acre, uh, fifteen acres just for fifty-five thousand dollars? I mean.
Right, and all of these properties were advertised for upset bids, and the entire public had the opportunity to purchase them. and the entire public had the opportunity to purchase them. And we encourage you to continue to look for surplus properties that we offer and to make competitive offers.
Thank you.
Well, now, to move to another motion, fewer words, but a lot more fun. With enthusiastic appreciation for her excellent work, I move that we extend Dr. Oakley's contract to the maximum time allowed by law through June 30th, 2029, and that we amend her contract to include an annual salary increase of 5% that we award a retention bonus of 10% of her 2025-26 compensation and that we make a contribution to a retirement account of her choice of $30,000.
Second.
Thank you, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that passes unanimously. Thank you, Dr. Oakley. I'm sorry.
Madam Chair.
Yes. I went fast, didn't I? Okay. We can do that again.
Okay, no, it's, I mean, it's just that I, I think that it's appropriate for us to give kudos to Dr. Whitney Oakley for the hard work that she has done since she took over leadership of this organization, because it's, it's more than a notion. And, and the fact that her staff has very ably gotten behind her to make sure that we are serving the needs of not just our students, but our families, our community, and also our staff. And that we expect, and I know we will get this, that we will continue to see efforts to try to figure it out, do it right, and make sure that the progress of our children is going up in, in the future. But I think it's worth noting, you know, her good work.
Thank you. We're now at board member comments, and I'll start with you, Mr. Coats.
Okay. Every year begins a new chapter in the lives of our students. From pre-K students crying for their mothers to high school students getting ready for the next big thing in their lives. It's a time of new beginnings and hope. Public schools require cooperation in the support of our elected purse holders, federal, state, and county. When that cooperation is lacking, we need to call it out. Not that many years ago, every kindergarten class in Guilford County had a teacher's aide, but not now. Why? Simple answer, the money to hire them is not there. We have pre-K schooling for children with a waiting list of approximately 550, and there are many more who would benefit from pre-K education, and benefit students do. But the benefit to these students can be attenuated, if not built upon. In kindergarten, if a teacher has a class with some children with pre-K schooling and other children without, where will the teacher focus her attention? You know the answer, the children who need the most help, those without the benefit of pre-K education. These students tend to catch up with the children who had pre-K education because the pre-K educated children were not significantly advanced in kindergarten. Where would our students be if all of them were in quality pre-K programs with teachers' aides in our kindergarten, first, second, and third grade classrooms? By third grade, instead of learning how to read, children need to be learning by reading. But too many of our children are not competent readers by third grade, which gets us back to our funders. Politicians should not be dementors. At the state level, the boondoggle of publicly paid tuition for private schools available to well-to-do parents is dispariting to our teachers and classified staff and that it has the effect of taking money out of salary, which General Assembly is actually duty-bound to pay. At the federal level, the boondoggle of diverting money earmarked for children to give tax breaks to people who don't need them, while cutting essential services and still grossly inflating our national debt, has to qualify as the GOAT of all boondoggles. I have not hesitated to criticize our county government when they thought they did not deal appropriately with Guilford County schools. But the county has done a better job of support. They need to take note of what is happening at other levels and catch the vision of true equity, which at the very least means a movement towards universal pre-K education and appropriate follow-up in the early grades. "Give us the tools and we will finish the job." These words of Winston Churchill, in a very different context, resonate today. Given the resources, Guilford County schools can increase literacy levels of our children, which translates into academic success, productive lives, and a strong economy. Let's find ways to start talking now so we can cooperate where possible.
Thank you, Chrissy.
Good evening and welcome back to school, everyone. This was a wonderful meeting. First of all, congratulations to Dr. Oakley for the extension of her contract. And we really appreciate so much all of the hard work that you do. And in particular, I appreciate your responsiveness. I tell people all the time, if I have something, I will text Dr. Oakley and I'll have not only an answer, but a resolution almost immediately. And I am incredibly grateful for all of the staff who support her, who make that possible, and for her responsiveness as well. It was wonderful to be able to hear all of the growth that the county is making. Very, very exciting to see all of these scores coming out and look forward to hearing more about things in our work session that's coming up. My, my heart's been hurting a lot the past week or two. Even though this is the fun, exciting time of year, we've also had several very highly-publicized incidents across the county that have just upset me to the core, hearing about things with bullying and, you know, weapons and fights and, and all of the things that all of us hate to hear about. And it really resonated a little bit when Ms. Erby said during our presentation, you were talking about the graduation rates at the early and middle colleges and the parent engagement in particular at those schools. And, you know, it's so important, parents, to be involved in your kids' lives. Ask those questions, you know, don't just ask them, hey, how was your day? Because if your kids are anything like mine were, they'll come home and say, fine, or eh, you know, what'd you do at school today? Nothing. Have those conversations with your kids, find out what's going on in their lives, be involved. There's nothing more important than you can do than be involved in the lives of your kids. And we see consistently that kids with good parent involvement get into less trouble in school, they perform better academically, and they end up growing up to be better citizens in our community. And your support just matters so, 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 so much. And I encourage, I've fielded lots of phone calls and emails, as I'm sure everyone sitting up here has, over the past two weeks. I encourage people to continue to reach out to us with your questions and concerns. I tell everybody who calls me, I can't guarantee that I can fix your problem, but I can guarantee that I'll listen to your problem and that I'll do whatever I have within my power to try to help find a resolution to it. So, you know, please reach out to us, we are responsive, we do read the emails, we listen to the phone calls. And we just, we want you to be part of your kids' education. Thank you.
Thank you, Diane.
First, I want to thank all, all staff that spent their Saturdays representing the district. I went all over from High Point to the north side of Greensboro and, you know, staff were manning tables and sitting in the heat and, you know, being there. That means a lot, because, you know, I assume that was your day off, but you, you came, you came to work anyway and you represented the district. We had two ribbon cuttings and the opening of traditional school. And to my knowledge, we didn't lose any kids, at least I didn't get the email. So, thank you, staff, for, because it takes a lot to run this district and the fact that you came other than, you know, from nine to five on, on Monday through, when, Monday through, you work up. Now y'all work till Friday again, right? Monday through Friday. You know, that's important. This room was full the day that you had the Title I program here. So, we, we can never say kudos enough, as you will hear me say a lot of times. We might not can't pay you, but we can thank you. The Guilford County Native 48th Annual Powwow will be September 19th through the 21st at the Greensboro Country Park. So I encourage those of us who have the opportunity to go and watch, it's a fabulous event, if you get a chance. And we have a very, we have the, I think, we have the largest population of Lumbee Native Americans outside of Ropeson County, are located here in Guilford County. So let's support them. Congratulations to Dr. Darian Harris and the Eastern Guilford Wildcats, if I'm correct, for the H.H. Humphrey Award. I have been with Dr. Harris from when he was in High Point at the middle college at GTCC in High Point. And to see his growth, as well as his leadership, you know, makes me very proud personally. And I, I think we're going to see greater things from him and from the school. I attend the North Carolina School Board Association, representing you, and I want you to know that today, they're in Washington, D.C., advocating on behalf of the federal dollars that, not just Guilford County, but, but one of the, the marks of, of what we do is when I was sitting in that meeting and they were saying, we're going, I was able to go back to the board bulletin for July and pull up what Dr. Oakley and staff had already put together as the impacts for Guilford County. So, they were happy to get that and in the way we had presented it. So, we were one, I know we were on the list of who they advocated for today. So, if anybody wants some of the other information that went on at the School Board Association meeting, you know, let me know and we can get an email to you. But they are trying very, very hard to represent us in Raleigh and in Washington. So, I hope we have a great school year and y'all just keep up the good work. Thank you.
Thank you. Kim?
Oh, boy. We've had a really good meeting and yes, welcome back. And congratulations to Dr. Oakley. I've enjoyed working with you. I am always bragging about our district to my fellow colleagues across the nation. And yes, I don't know if I'm going to keep bragging because, you know, they might be, you know, be trying to, you know, seduce you to come over to another place, so, you know. And that's okay. In reference to the, the $13 million that was lost in a grant, you know, I just want to encourage the community that those who you voted for, we need to be contacting them about the loss of that funding as well. And, you know, it's important for us to advocate, you know, for our children, for this community overall. The North Carolina Department of Public Instruction has put out, is going to put out a strategic plan that says that North Carolina will be the best school system by 2030. That's aggressive. That in five years, we are going to be able to, like we talked about, close some gaps in five years. So I don't know what kind of magic or what kind of work that Mo is going to be doing across North Carolina, but that's the goal, and it's out there. So, we, I would love for that to be a reality for North Carolina. I know Guilford County is a good school system, so we are on the right track in that regard. What we can do, Diane, the board members can shout out the great things that are happening at our schools. We have a mic, we have our own social media mic as well. I know, we can shout out, and we should lift up our schools more as board members in that regard. And I just want to alert you to the fact that when students are taking the math exams, they are reading. I think 85% of the math exam is reading. So, you know, it, it doesn't count. But if our students are excelling in math, they are reading. So, the testing and the scores and things like that, you know, it has some, it tells some story, but it doesn't tell the whole story about what's happening with teaching and learning in our schools. Thank you. Oh, wait a minute, sorry. The Bonner students of HP, High Point University will be doing a food drive throughout High Point, beginning October 1st through November 25th at our high school, Southwest, Andrews, Central, and Kearns. They'll be doing a food drive, thank you.
Thank you, Deborah.
I do believe I'll take a page of that advice. And shout out to Weaver, Page, and Northern High Schools, all in District 5, all in the top 100 in the, no, top 200 in the nation, if I'm not mistaken, for high schools across the country, which is absolutely amazing. And that's every single standard high school in District 5. We are showing up, we are here. Another handy thing that has drastically improved, thank you to Dr. Oakley for this one, is Infinite Campus. For the parents who are working in the district and trying to follow all this stuff at their schools and keep track of everything, I hope you guys are finding this to be just as user-friendly as I am. I think it's a lot more helpful than Power School. Imagine my surprise and, oh, this is nice, to not have to sort through pages and pages and pages of the things when it just flashed up on the screen right when I logged in that, oh, one of my kids has missing work in big red letters. Like, oh, that's handy. Kids might not appreciate it so much, but on a parent level, it was fabulous. Another thing I would encourage everyone to pursue as we start the school year, especially for our high school freshmen as we talk about college prep and our students prepared for college, is I recently attended a introductory session for what's called our SEO Scholars, more commonly known as our Shift Ed Program. I would encourage all freshmen and their parents to look into this program. The introductory session I did in High Point was very informational. And not only do they start with the freshmen and follow them all the way through graduation of high school, but they also follow you through college. And they have an 80% success rate of college graduation, not just high school, and 100% college acceptance rate, once you graduate from Guilford County schools. They've moved all over the place, they started in New York and they're coming all the way down. Now they've made it all the way to Miami. If they can find success in those large cities, we ought to make it glowing beautiful here in Guilford County. I do want to address something that's been said repeatedly in this meeting and that a phrase that I heard repeated was, "Nothing done." This has happened and nothing has been done. This has been said and nothing has been done. These events have occurred and nothing has been done. I've said it before and I'll wind up saying it again, I'm sure, that just because you do not see it does not mean nothing has been done. It is illegal for us to share students' disciplinary records, nor would I if it were not. If it was my child in trouble, I would not want their dirty laundry aired in public. I would not do that to your children. And, one more time, it is illegal. It is illegal for us to share staff HR records. It is illegal for any employer to do that, as far as I'm aware, especially on a professional level. Nothing done may simply mean nothing visible. And we are bound by the law, as far as what we can share, and I will not break those laws. Nobody here will. So, it's been a challenge in dealing with some of the things going on here lately, and this is not isolated to one incident, I will say that, to speak the truth while maintaining everyone's privacy and dignity. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda.
I really appreciate the great presentation. I know there's a lot of work that goes into this, and I know there's a lot of people that are involved with this. What I want to say is thank you for all the great work that's going on in Guilford County. It, again, shows that we are moving forward in a lot of areas. And we're not falling back. We may not, we may be stalled a little bit, but then, but we're keeping forward. You know, a steady pace sometimes is much better than a superpace. If you can just steadily grow, you will get to where you want to be. I want to say congratulations to Dr. Harris and his team at Eastern. They're doing a great job, that's great leadership and a great team that makes those outcomes happen. We're going to be celebrating, we're going to have a celebration of excellence coming up on the September the 17th. Again, this is where we showcase all the great work that's going on in our schools. And I hope that a lot, we see a great, we need to celebrate it and we need everyone to come and be proud of what's going on in our district. I want to thank Dr. Oakley and her staff for continuing to work hard and move this district forward with no matter the obstructions and the challenges thrown at her at any time. We've had some and the challenges thrown at her at any time. We've had some boulders come along the way, and she's managed to jump over them, come around them, or dig under them, and that's what we need in a leader. Great leaders' number-one goal is to build a great team, because it takes us all together to do it, and she's a great leader, and she has a great team. So, thank you all.
Thank you. Pastor Sherrill?
Well, welcome back to the school year. Good luck in the carpool lines. My family has three of them this year. Kudos to Principal Conaway and Kaiser for keeping it moving. Well done, everybody. We start this year with the tremendous growth that's reflected in this accountability report. Thank you so much for this tonight. And with that, the reminder for us all that growth really should be prioritized beyond simply achievement and how we measure what is happening in our schools. But it does reflect such excellent work by our entire staff, and of course, by Dr. Oakley, whom we, as a board, have the chance to commend again tonight for her excellent work. And I know we begin this year with this same spirit and progress on our minds. I want to take a moment tonight to celebrate Lim Cox, who tonight is being inducted into the Guilford County Sports Hall of Fame. Lim served thirty-two years with Greensboro City Schools, including as Athletic Director, when he was at the forefront of many new initiatives in the city, including integration of our schools, working for access to sports for all our students, and for equity in pay for coaches of all genders. These days, Lim can be found as a fixture at the Bryan YMCA. We're hanging out with family or friends that love him, or taking in a Grimsley football game, which is where I got to see him last Friday night, as we cheered the Whirlies on to victory against East Forsyth. I appreciate Lim's friendship and his continued support and encouragement of our schools, and the pioneering work that leaves a legacy for us all to walk into. Lim does keep an eye on us, and so, Lim, I beg your forgiveness for shouting you out tonight, but I do congratulate Lim for such a well-deserved honor. And as we're considering legacy, I do want to say that we hold Alan Duncan in our hearts today, upon the recent death of his wife, Pamela Duncan. Alan is Vice Chair of the State Board of Ed, of course, and previously served in this seat as the at-large representative of the Board of Education, and in that seat as the Board Chair. Alan is known for his expertise, his accessibility in communication, his care for students, educators, families alike. I hear about Alan Duncan all the time from people that have appreciated his work, and in many ways, I think he sets a standard of excellence and ethics in this work, with so many qualities that I would hope to emulate as a board member. And many of us who do this kind of work and seek to do it in this way know what the partnership of a spouse means, and Pam Duncan was in so many ways a gift to our community and our schools, as she was also an accomplished attorney and community leader in her own right. So, we remember her, and we celebrate the gifts of her life, and we hold in our hearts Alan and their daughters and their family as they grieve. Thanks.
Thank you. Freddie?
Good evening. Thank you very much, Dr. Stevens and Dr. Oakley, for the great presentation. And to you, Dr. Oakley, thank you so much for being with us and accepting us, and I know sometimes we get on that last nerve, but I can say, whenever we ask a question, you always have an answer, and I really thank you for your communication, because I'm big on communication, as you know. On Tuesday, no, on Thursday, the Legal Women Voters have invited myself and Board Member Coats there for a session talking about education, Guilford County school. So, we hope to represent you well, which I know we will. The church called Congregational United Church of Christ celebrated a hundred and twenty-five years as far as their anniversary, and I was invited there two Sundays ago, and it was a phenomenal, phenomenal service, and I invite you to go out and support them. Thank you to all the administrators, staff, for the welcoming for all our students for the first day. I tried to go to every school, do an open house, which did not work. I missed one because of timing, but I was at that school on the first day. So, I didn't do all the open houses, but I got to all my schools, doing open house in first day, and I tried my best to stay there at least thirty minutes, so they can see where I was and ask questions, and really have some relationship with parents. Parents will talk to you if you're visible, but you have to be in place to build that relationship. So, I thank everyone who took a part in the first day of school, and also getting ready for the first day of school, to welcome our young scholars back. On October the fourth, City Help of the Triad will have a Black Mill Summit at Dudley High School. It will start at nine o'clock and hopefully end at two o'clock, so others can get to their perspective gains. As you know, it's not a I, it's a we. We together are changing the outcome of our students, and it takes all of us. To see thirty-one schools that exceeded in growth tells you, it's not the parents, it's not the students, it's all of us, and I thank you all for all that you do. As far as the federal dollars being cut, now that's a different story, and I can stay here all night for that, but I know you're ready to go home, so I will leave that alone. But I do know that we need to come up with a method, with something, to see how we can get our dollars back, because our students are losing services, and they need their service. Okay, one more thing. As far as Guilford County School administrators, I want to do a shout-out to Shirley Morrison and Fay Crowder Phillips, because I know I wear them to death. Fay, I love you. Shirley, we're on the shore where you are, okay, in the back row. So, anyway, thank you all very much, and I thank you all for all you do.
Thank you. And very quickly, I forgot to mention Ms. Teagan, who was our student speaker at Peeler Hampton, so I shouted out the other kids. Pastor Sherrill, absolutely join you, and all that you said about Alan Duncan and Pam, it was just a loss for me not having him here, but he certainly was just a model of leadership here, and decorum and integrity. The Chamber of Commerce luncheon that we went to, where Dr. Harris was recognized, again, congratulations to him, but there was also presentations from business leaders and some of the corporations that were coming here, like Jet Zero, wonderful presentation. But one of the things that I know is that all of the people that they'll be bringing into town won't be looking in certain neighborhoods for homes or schools. And, you know, as I was saying earlier, the neighborhood that I live in, there's a developer that's interested in bringing housing there, and has contacted twelve grocery stores again, and they won't come, because we don't meet the conditions for a grocery store. Now, I support affordable housing one hundred percent, but my neighborhood is so oversaturated that a grocery store won't come. So, as we're thinking about these candidate forums that are going on, and you're thinking about these city council races, I want you to think about the candidates that have the analysis, that understands that, and thinks very innovatively and very different about housing, because those decisions are going to create more Title I schools that people don't want to move to. And we've announced that we're closing some schools, and we're closing some schools in those same communities, because they're operated half-capacity, and we can't afford to replace a roof or an HVA system in a community school. And this is just going to, it's a vicious cycle, and if we don't think very differently about that, then we will be contributing to the problem that we're trying to address. What you can do about that is early voting begins September eighteenth through October fourth, so please get people out for early voting. We don't want to take a chance on something happening that prevents people from getting to the polls. So, thank you, and with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you.